The regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas will now come to order at the time of 7:00 or 6:04 PM. Item number two is the invocation, which will be given by Mr. Bob Byrd, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming back.
Father, thank you this evening for the Lord Jesus Christ in our lives. Thank you that you're an anchor, that when times of trouble come our way, when times of stress, when winds of lack of opportunity blow against us and we feel like we're facing many things, we have this anchor that is sure, and that's Christ. Lord, we're in a city that is in the throes of change. There are ups and downs. There is decisions that we all agree with, there are decisions that we don't agree with. But, Lord, we trust that you have brought into our midst leaders that are looking to you, and we can trust them because they are looking to you for guidance. And we thank you for our police force, our fire department. Lord, there are four Marines killed today by a shooter, and he was shot by a policeman that in all probability protected many others. We thank you for that emphasis in our city and the good people that we have behind these badges and the leadership that you've provided. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And we commit this time to you and ask that the decisions that are made, the things that are discussed, will bring honor and glory to our Creator. In Jesus' name, amen.
Face the flag, hand out a heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number three is a roll call. Mr. Sines.
Mr. Best.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Item number four is the consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of the workshop session of June 18th, 2015. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 18th, 2015. C, approval of the minutes of the special session, July 6th, 2015. D, approval of the final plat for the Glen Auburn subdivision. And E, approval of the final plat for Caballero subdivision. And you do recommend approval?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Flores.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, and E.
We moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D. Any discussion? Non-proceeded the vote, as per the motion, please raise your right hand. Close same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Item number five is citizens' comments. If you are a citizen of or a taxpayer too, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes and know that staff and council may not comment. We do have two on the list. Friends of the library.
I'm a gentleman, but in school. Because I want to speak here, everything I want to say in three minutes. I'm out of my home, I don't have much time here. I'm a gentleman, I'm president of Friends of the Library. And this is our next salad luncheon and silent auction. It's our major event. It's our biggest fundraiser. Last year was the first year we were able to have it over here, which was awesome. We had more room, we had a really good turnout, we made about $6,100. Briefly, what we do is support the library and the libraries, mainly their wants more than their needs. We've purchased equipment, we've purchased refrigerators over there, anything that can make their working environment more enjoyable and the publics. And we want to have our next salad luncheon, September 23rd or 24th, whatever that Thursday is. We just want to see if we could have it at no cost again, as we did last year. Since it is something that supports the city, all of our funds goes directly to the library. So I know y'all can't talk, but that was my first step, so y'all discuss, and then I'll get with somebody.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Byrd?
I just wanted to show you what's on my heart these days. I'd like to give you a personal invitation to the event that is scheduled, August the 1st. And this is one of those things that doesn't just happen, there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And you'll notice on your sheet there, we're giving away a go throw camera. And that means we've got a lot of folks coming from out of town, and they think they're going to win it because they're good. And we've got, we're working on a handicap system so that everyone has a level playing field. But we would like to see you come down there and support what's going on. There's a good chance that we're going to be on Pleasure Theater, probably. So, you know, if you miss us at the event, you might see us at the theater. And thank you for the opportunity to invite you all. Hope you can come. If you're in front or back of me, you know what's going on. If you're alongside of me, that's where we need you. Okay? Thank you.
Other comments? Item six is recognition of fire department awards. Chief Garrus.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. Good evening. John Austin of the Fire Department. Stands out in the public's eye a whole lot, other than when we're fighting fires. We very seldom get recognition. The farmer we're going to recognize tonight, not only fights fires, but he takes pictures of fires, and he's putting Pleasanton out there where everybody can see. The state association has a magazine, and last year he was on the cover, having best in show picture. And that's what he does this year, he'll be on the cover. Because he got best in show again for his photography skills. Jay Garcia, where you at? Come on up here with me. This is the gentleman here that takes the pictures, and like I said, he also fights fires when he has time. I get on him all the time by carrying his camera into the fire, but, you know. We have a little montage of the pictures that he won this year, that he won with. He got a third place in one category. This here is the third place in fire-related acts. This is a Lidle firefighter, up around Lidle somewhere. I don't know how he gets around to take these pictures, but anyway, he got up to Lidle and took this picture and got third place. This one here is one of the fires we had, a tire fire. That's two of our firefighters going in there. And there again, he had his camera and not his bunker gear, but that's okay. This one here is a life-saving acts category. This is a wreck you might remember out on the 97 East, where the truck hit the back of the school bus doing about 70 miles an hour. And we're performing a rescue on the driver there. He took that picture and he got first place in that category for this picture. The next one will be best in show for this year.
Wow.
Fire on San Antonio Street, first part of last year. We did save the house, we just burned one room. I kid him all the time, him and Trini. I think Trini poses for these pictures. A lot of these pictures for best in show, Trini's in them. So, the next one I'm going to show is from about four years ago. He got best in show. Eighteen wheeler fire out on the interstate. He was in the right place at the right time when we opened the back doors. And one of those firefighters is Trini. I think it's the one on the left, walking towards the rescue. So he's in that picture. This one was from a couple of years ago. He got best in show. Whoops. He got best in show for that picture also, and y'all know who that is. That's Trini again.
That just shows he's involved, right, Chief?
Yeah. I have to give Trini credit. He shows up, fights a fire, puts his stuff on, and does the job, so he deserves to get his picture taken. So, and that's what Jay did over the past several years with his photographs. I congratulate you for what you did. Now we have one more award we want to give. I don't know what to say. I said a little bit about the individual already. Now, the way things are nowadays, volunteering is almost a thing of the past. We can't get volunteers. The dedication's not there. When we do get some, they come and go pretty quickly. But this individual has been with the department for 43 years. I think that deserves something, you know. So the city wants to present him with this award or a plaque for his dedicated service to the city. It says, "City of Pleasant recognizes Trinidad Trini Boskus. For 43 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Pleasanton and the greater Adesosa County area with deepest appreciation, July 16th, 2015."
Mayor, could the council indulge us with some pictures with the chief and Mr. Boskus for just a minute?
Absolutely. Thank you. I beg you. No? Tonight? Probably like at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, I'll give you a call. All right, I guess we've got to get back to it. Item number seven is ordinances and recognition. Item number is the second reading and adoption of ordinance, summer 15-46, annexing 90.17 acre tract of land consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Hazel Van Norman survey, 891, abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espolier survey, 1553, abstract 22, Adesosa County, Texas. Ordinance number 15-1146, Norton Southern City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, annexing the herein described territory, a 91, 90.17 acre tract of land consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Hazel Van Norman survey, 891, abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espolier survey of 1553, abstract 221, Adesosa County, Texas, to the City of Pleasanton, Adesosa County, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of said city so as to include said herein after prescribed property within said city and granting to all the inhabitants and said properties all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants to all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city in adopting a service plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 15-1146, annexing, annexing a 90.17 acre tract of land consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Hazel Van Norman survey, 891, abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espolier survey of 1553, abstract 221, Adesosa County, Texas.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1146, annexing a 90.17 acre tract of land consisting of 22, 27.44 acres out of the Hazel Van Norman survey, 891, abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espolier survey, number 1553, abstract 21, Adesosa County, Texas. Any discussion? Non-proceeded the vote, as per the motion, please raise your right hand. Close same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number eight is departmental reports.
Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Weezer will give the Public Works Director's report, followed by the Finance Director's report for the third quarter, ending. Other departmental reports are submitted, and we'll move to that point to the manager's message.
Okay.
Good evening, council mayor.
Good evening.
On the utilities department, they finished replacing the long services on Windship Road and installed six inch and three eight inch gate bulbs on the water main between Goodwin and Ogblon. The Waterwell Services finished up the repairs to Jimmy C. Well, and it's now back online. All wells are at 100%. Our daily water production is back up to 2.8 million gallons per day, so we're sending some water. Our water main project is officially underway. Our construction crew is laying around 120 feet of 12-inch pipe a day. They are currently on Yellowstone, just past Yosemite. Recently, we added two more directional bores, one that will be crossing the drainage covert on Benz Dell across from Coastal Bend College, and then one more under the drainage covert on Havre Road next to Marathon Oil. These bores will also be done by Fonseca Construction. On Landmark, our water tower contractor has finished welding and fabricating the water tank. The painting crew has moved in and began sandblasting. They then will spray the primer coat, or they have already sprayed the primer coat. They will be followed by several coats of polyurethane coating. In two weeks, they will begin the installation of the approved decal on both the north and the south side of the tank, and they are scheduled to start raising that tank by August the 3rd. So around the first week of August, they'll be raising that tank. The street department, throughout the month, the crews worked on several service orders consisting of tree trimming and debris removal. This week, the street crew began a demolition project consisting of six houses. They worked through some challenges at first, but nonetheless, they continued with the task in a safe and timely manner. We need to thank the fire department and the police department for their assistance in keeping this job safe. There were some real challenges. The crews have also prepped five intersections to be ready for hot mix overlay, which is scheduled for Friday, July 24th. Parks department have been working on repairs on the sports complex and ball fields, and they have replaced some broken windows at the press box and replaced several sprinklers at the ball fields. They have also begun to replace signage around the concession stand and restrooms. They installed new sinks and faucets at restroom number three at the River Park, and they have also been working on the vegetation control by weed trimming and herbicide applications. This has been done at all the parks and pecan orchard. This completes our report. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Weezer? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to review with you our quarterly financial statement. Our fiscal year begins October 1st, and September 30th is when it ends, so we are 75% through our fiscal year. Looking at page 22, I have great news to report on our utility expenses. We have spent $2,766,697 at 55%. I would like to recognize our Public Works Director, Johnny Weezer, and his team, David Alveso, Gabriel Guerra, and J.J. Roberts. Thank y'all for being here and for your support for keeping the expenses 20% below our projections with our prudent spending and excellent management of their budget. On page 23, you will see that we have taken in $3,311,587, which puts us at 59% in revenue for the utility fund. We are 16% below where we should be at this time, and this is due, of course, of the wet weather that we have endured this year. And we are hoping to finish out the fiscal year with a few dry months to help increase those revenues. Looking at the next page, 24, we have spent $5,990,262, which puts us at 67% in the general fund, due to the shrewd spending and exceptional managing of the budget by our police chief, Ronald Sanchez, and our Public Works Department led by Johnny Weezer, for keeping the expenses 8% under our projections. And because we are under expenses, we are able to absorb the purchases that were not part of this year's budget, but was approved by the council. And this was the six brand-new police Tahos, the Cardinal badge system, and the additional firearms for our police department. And mayor and council, because of your support, our police department is moving forward. To end on a positive note, take a look at the end of page 26. We have already brought in $9,245,395 and 103% in revenues for the general fund. This puts us over the 75% we are projected to be at at the end of the quarter. I would like to thank all of our department heads for their exceptional operating and managing of their budgets. And since there is a surplus in this year's budget, there's a possibility that Mr. Weezer will bring for quotes and a request for purchase of several trucks that are sorely needed in our Public Works Department. Mayor and council, thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's great to be back in front of you all, and I might add that all of our thoughts and prayers are with Ms. Prisika on rehabilitation from her recent surgery. And I did have contact with her husband today, and he says she's moving along, but the pain meds definitely have kept her off center stripe, if you will. And certainly, when you go through joint replacements, this is the protocol. I will tell you that visiting with Mrs. Prisika earlier this week, she gave me the steps to go through for those joint replacements, and I think I'll try to stay on my knees at least another week or so. So with that being said, we'll move into the manager's message, and for all those here, we do truly miss Ms. Prisika. Her presence at the council meeting, her absence here at the council meeting is sorely missed by the staff, to say the least. Our city manager's message this evening begins with, first of all, just a follow-up to Mrs. Bandy's report. I can't thank the department heads enough for the prudent nature in their expenditures. Mr. Weezer, the chief, myself, and several others, we sat down about five months ago, and we began to discuss what we needed to do to see ourselves through this fiscal year. Obviously, with the report you received this evening, you can see the prudent nature. I also want to recognize those superintendent. We had one superintendent this evening that was scheduled to be at a daughter's volleyball game. I have a feeling he ran home and showered, and then, I hope he didn't break the leg getting here, but Gabriel, I'm honored by your presence and thanks for being here this evening. Our report this evening, the airport layout plan, we're trying to find a time and a date that we can sit down with the airport advisory board. Our consultant is out of pocket until the 11th of August. I told him that he and I would visit in the next week to try to center on the date. Our airport board chairman is anxious to get on with this meeting to begin the construction of the airport layout plan. Perry Havenar and I have been in constant contact. I've had several conversations with Mr. Drew, and I will continue to have those conversations as well with the mayor. With Mr. Drew out of town, way up in North Texas most of the time, and the mayor with his varying requirements and his varying responsibilities, and the consultant being out of town right now, we're trying to find that date where we can gather and have at least a decent set-down to see which way we're going to move with our airport with the development for the future. I might add, item number two, I want to congratulate Mr. Aguirre, who has transitioned and is transitioning into the information technology system. He has been managing our website for some months. This has been a slow process because he, as well as others, do have other primary responsibilities. I might add that our citizens can go on our website now and see a calendar for the city. We'll have various things on that calendar to include council meetings. We will also post monthly when Mr. La Fuente from Congressman Cuero's office will be here. He is here once a month for any citizens or council members that want to speak with him. Next on the agenda is the security assessments. The chief and I have been visiting about this for months. After the 911 incident many years ago, or about 14 years ago, the federal government through FEMA instigated and implemented the National Incident Management System. There are a number of NIMS courses, and along with this became vulnerability assessments by all public agencies against the possibility of terrorist activities. We need to get our city up to speed. We will be beginning with City Hall and moving from there. The chief is actively working on that. Next, I just call your attention to budget workshops and budget schedules as we proceed forward. Tonight, obviously, we're at our regular council meeting of July 16th. I think you have the handout there in front of you. The next proposed regular council meeting is August 6th. Prior to that, around 5:30, we hope to have a special work session to present the proposed budget and tax rate to the council. We have already ventured our way through the draft budget and our programs, policies, and initiatives for this next year. We do have a few changes that'll be noted at that time. This has been a very smooth budget, even though we do not have the fruits of some of the economic gains in the past. We feel very confident that this budget is one of the best budgets we've put together in years. After that, you will see that Mr. Aguirre will publish the effective tax rate, rollback rate, and notice of public hearings, one and two, on the tax rate. On the 12th of August, the 19th of August, he'll post another notice for the first and second public hearing. We're only required by the state local government code, or local government code, we're only required to have one public hearing, but we feel like our citizens need to have the opportunity for a second, and we think that's the right thing to do. August 20th is followed with the next regular council meeting, which is the second meeting in August. The 27th, the first public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate. September 3rd is a regular council meeting and the second public hearing on those two items. And then we move forward from there to September 9th with the notice of tax revenue increase, if there's any, and that tax revenue increase, let me just note, is above the effective tax rate, not that we're proposing an increase in the tax rate. We can all take a deep breath. September 17th is the possible adoption of the proposed budget property tax rate, amended budget, at the regular city council meeting, September 23rd. If approved, would be the first advertisement for the ordinance passing the budget and the tax rate in September 30th, the second, obviously with the following day beginning our new fiscal year. For purposes of this meeting, we just need to know that we'll see each other on August 6th about 5:00, where the staff and the city manager will propose the budget for the next fiscal year. And finally, a number of the new council members have visited with me about our consultant that did the utility rate study a year ago, as ordered by the council. They've asked some very detailed questions and quite warranted. I've had a visit with Carolyn Marshall, our rate study consultant, and we've asked her to be at the August 6th meeting to give a presentation to the council, especially the newer council members, so they can get a feel for how these rates were adopted. At that time, we'll see if the council wants to take further, or give further direction to the staff. With that, mayor, I'll stand for any questions, and that's your manager's message this evening.
Questions from Mr. Chrisen? Thank you, Mr. Chrisen. Item 10 is city manager's special recognition.
Mayor, out of, out of not wanting to be self-indulgent, we were, I had a letter mailed to me by a citizen in the community, and without being self-indulgent, I would ask the mayor to read that letter, and then I'll move to that point to recognize some employees.
This is written, the 6th of July, 2015. It says, "Dear City Manager and Director of Public Works Department, from Samuel C. Gonzalez, Master Sergeant, United States Air Force, retired." And it says, "A subject to city employees." The letter reads, "Good day, sirs, on the 20th..." On the 25th of June, I have requested that someone come by and take a look at a section of city property that was overgrown and weeds, some as tall as seven feet, to see what could be done. Today, a couple of city employees came by my house and cleared away the overgrown weeds. These men, Billy and Eddie, sorry, I don't know their last names, came by with the front-end loader at first. As the section in requests was maybe four feet wide, they had to go back and get the weed eaters to do the job. As with all," and that's all capitalized, "all city employees, they did a great job, left no mess, and they were very professional. It would please me if someone could take the time and let them know verbally or in writing that," let's see, I lost my spot there, "that I let their supervisors know that they did a great job that they did in such a short time. I would like to address the city manager, Mr. Pearson. You have some of the best city employees I have had pleasure of seeing in action. I spent 31 years in the Navy and Air Force and worked for the city of San Antonio for 15 years, so I kind of know what to look for in employees. Again, all I can say is that you have the best supervisor workers under your leadership. Thank you for your time. Signed, Mr. Samuel C. Gonzalez, Master Sergeant, United States Air Force, retired."
Mayor, I had the pleasure of actually meeting Mr. Gonzalez for the first time this evening. I called him after receiving that letter. It took me several minutes at my desk to actually gain my composure, because this is what it's really all about. This is what it's really all about. And I ask our citizens, find a better staff. Find a better staff. I feel lucky to be a part of it. We have great people in this city, and we have a great staff that's representing our public. Mr. Weezer and I actually had to find out which Billy and which Eddie, which didn't take too long, and they are here this evening. First of all, though, and I know the mayor wants to recognize Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for your time. At the end of the presentations, Mayor and Council, if you'd indulge us in Mr. Gonzalez with our two employees to take pictures. These guys usually show up when there's a problem, much like many of our staff. Like many of our staff, they work in total anonymity, but you all know, and we all know, what they do. I've been one to kind of coin terms. The fire department and the police department are the vanguards of our city. The Public Works Department is the backbone of our city, and it's up to every one of us at City Hall to do everything we can to give them the tools and the Department of Facilities and Activities everything they need to do what they need to do. We are nothing but support here, after guarding the citizens' money. So with that being said... Mr. Billy Aguirre is the foreman in our streets department. There's only 10 minutes for a speech after this. The Office of the City Manager recognizes Vadel Billy Aguero for delivering the ultimate in customer service to the citizens of Pleasanton, July 16th, 2015. Billy, congratulations. I couldn't even... Next is Mr. Eddie Galindo. Eddie, could you come up? Eddie has his new ID badge on, which I may add this evening is a result of Mrs. Lozano and others seeing that we needed to have a more professional ID badge. They have the holograms on them, so they can't be tampered with, which fits T. Cole rule where police and fire departments are concerned. Eddie, the Office of the City Manager recognizes Eddie Galindo for delivering the ultimate in customer service to the citizens of Pleasanton, Texas, July 16th, 2015. Mayor and Mr. Gonzalez, could you and the council indulge us just for a few pictures? If you'll just give us a few more minutes of your time.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Did you have a letter for me?
No, that was the letter. I just, you mentioned you wanted to recognize Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay.
Yes.
Item number 11, Mayor's message and announcements, I have none, but item number 12, do you have a special recognition? We like to thank those who have served, so we just like to recognize Mr. Gonzalez for 25 years serving in the Navy and the Air Force. We appreciate your service. In action to rename Main Street entrance road to the Pleasanton River Park to Veterans' Memorial West Road. Mr. Ross?
I would like to make the motion to rename the Main Street entrance road to the Pleasanton Municipal Park from Main Street Veterans Memorial West Road. Any discussion?
None. Proceed the votes in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries.
Item number 14 is discussion in action to direct the city staff concerning the TMRS plan for the City of Pleasanton employees, and Mrs. Lozano.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The City Council of Pleasanton, Texas, at the June 16th meeting directed the city staff to provide cost for considering of upgrading the retirement plan through TMRS. This upgrade, as reported by Mr. David Rodriguez, the city's TMRS representative, would provide city employees with the best retirement plan that TMRS has to offer. Mr. Rodriguez reported that the 20-year retirement provision at any age is an excellent recruiting tool. It could be also said that it would provide the younger professionals out of school to see a tremendous opportunity to have several careers, like me. The city staff has requested and received the cost to implement the plan. As indicated in the handout from Mr. Rodriguez, the 20-year retirement plan currently in place has a contribution rate of 16.45 percent this year, 16.28 percent in 2016, and linear projections through 2022. As indicated in the handouts, the funded full rate percentages are similar but obviously higher for the 20-year provision, 16.45 percent this year, 17.32 percent in 2016, linear projections through 2022. The average increase for the 20-year provision is about 8 tenths of 1 percent per year. The next consideration in analyzing this provision deals with the actual cost in dollars and cents. The city staff has quantified the numbers for the next fiscal year based on a 2 percent and 4 percent cost of living adjustment, as reported in the draft budget by the city manager on June 16th. The 20-year provision, the general fund, it would be an increase of $29,212, and utility fund, it would be an increase of $10,052. These figures represent an increase in the salary and benefits portion of general fund, 5.9 per thousand of 1 percent, which is $29,212 per $4,870,683. Utility fund, 5.8 per thousand of 1 percent, which is a $10,052 per $1,724,410. Mr. Rodriguez also provided the cost analysis of the city submitting a one-time $200,000 contribution in order to reduce the contribution rate. As seen in the handout, what the $200,000 in red at the top of the contribution rate will be reduced each year over the original proposal with no contribution, this would obviously have to be the case because the city would be paying down its funds ratio. The actual reduction in cost would take effect in 2017. Please refer to the handout once again to realize the actual cost reduction in the city's contribution. The actual reduction amounts to approximately $15,000 per year over the next six years. At this rate, the $200,000 one-time contribution would be realized in 12.5 years of actual budget savings. This contribution is a lump sum. This contribution in a lump sum can be made at any time in the future as well. The city staff recommends caution with this lump sum because of commitments with the fire station and other projects in the upcoming months. Your options are in front of you. Our recommendation is to direct the city staff to implement the 20-year retirement provision at any age on January 1st, 2016, providing the best retirement plan offered by the Texas Municipal Retirement System. This plan is to be implemented by the presentation of an ordinance for the city council to approve.
Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to direct city staff to implement the 20-year retirement provision at any age on January 1, 2016, thus providing the best retirement plan offered by the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS. This plan is to be implemented by the presentation of an ordinance for the city council to approve. Any discussion?
None. Proceed the votes in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Lozano. Item number 15, the regular session of July 16th, 2015 is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, as it pertains to deliberation regarding consultation with attorney, 551.071. Executive session matters may be discussed and acted upon in open session if appropriate. Time is 6:48 PM. Regular session of the City Council, City of Pleasanton, Texas, hereby reconvene at 7:56 PM. Item number 18 is discussion, possible action concerning a possible resolution to case number 14-09-0794-CVA, City of Pleasanton versus Ernest Trevino, 218th District Court, Atascosa County, Texas.
Mr. Hall.
I will make the motion concerning item number 18, a possible resolution in cause number 14090794-CVA, City of Pleasanton versus Ernest Trevino, 218th Judicial District Court of Atascosa County, as discussed in executive session.
It's been moved and seconded to take the action concerning a possible resolution, case number 14-09-0794-CVA, City of Pleasanton versus Ernest Trevino, 218th Judicial District Court of Atascosa County, as discussed in executive session. Any discussion? None. Proceed the votes in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries. If there's no objection, I'm dismissing item number 19. All right, item number 20 is review of the bills.
No, sir.
There's none. Item number 21.
I agree. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Move and second adjourned. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Meeting is adjourned at 7:58 PM.